Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, August 11th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. I would like to make note of all councilors present with our city administrator, John Bohanko, with the exception of councillor Edwards, who has been excused for the evening. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item four this evening, and as you can see, I love a full house. We have two very, very special recognitions this evening. First off, I would like to congratulate the 2025 Thornton Academy Boys State Championship Lacrosse Team. The Thornton Academy Golden Trojans ended the Falmouth Navigators' 28-game winning streak on June 21st in the state championship game with an ending score of eight to six. The Golden Trojans finished the season 14-3. The team included 34 players, who I would like to recognize and acknowledge, so bear with me, and I apologize if any names are misspelt, mispronounced. But we have Drew Mackey, Jack DeLeo, Carter Pennell, Corbin Pousard, Ben Knox, Will Edborg, Ben White, Will Marston, Landon Faulkner, Chase Paquette, Charlie Lemay, Grady Hershey, Jack Parity, Jake Skillings, Colin Pennell, Carter Cormier, Ryan Cozy, Jackson, excuse me, Niggin, Ben Watts, Sean Harder, Colin Jachmowicz, Casey Fornier, James Steves, Blake Boudette, Daniel Howe, Brady Pacora, Carter Nelson, Landon Demers, Matthew Faucher, Will McNaughton, Dom Martin, Jacob Pelton, Jackson Howard, and Max Howard. Players Grady Hershey and Jack DeLeo had been named to the Portland Press Herald's All-State Team, and Grady is a Thornton Academy sophomore, who has been selected as their defense long-stick midfielder. Jack is a Thornton Academy senior, who will be attending Merrimack College next season. I would also like to recognize coaches Ryan Hershey, Chris Driscoll, Mike Hershey, Brian Dohr, Wyatt LeBlank, John Chapizen, Chad LeBrecq, Aaron Scott, and Cody Dubey for a very successful season. Coach Ryan Hershey has also been named Coach of the Year and has led the Golden Trojans to all three, 2018, 2019, and 2025, of their Class A state titles since taking over the program in 2010. I, along with the members of the city council, would like to congratulate these players and their coaches for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to the sport, and the community is very, very proud of you. Congratulations. Okay, with that, I am going to call a quick five-minute recess while we take the team down to the steps. We'd like to get some quick photos, and then we will continue on All right, second on the agenda this evening, we do have a recognition of a special young man, Tyler Johnson. While working at a paving site the morning of July 29th on Cleveland Street, a crew member had noticed that a home across the street from where they were working had caught on fire and was spreading fast. Tyler immediately had them call 911, and as he ran to enter the smoke-filled home, upon finding one child and their dog, I'm sorry, as he ran to enter the home, he found one child and their dog, and removed them from the harm, and as he made a second trip into the home after learning from the child that there was another inside. After finding and removing the second child, he then made a third trip into the home to rescue the grandfather. And from what I understand, the dog knew that there were people left in the house and ran in a second time as well. Tyler also assisted in that second attempt with the dog. He selfishly, without a second thought to his own safety, and acting on instinct alone, made three trips inside the burning home, and was able to get the two children, their grandfather, and the family dog, out of the home and to safety just minutes before the home became engulfed in flames and as the fire department arrived on scene. Because of Tyler's actions, four lives were saved that day, and a family is still together. This type of action and bravery is proof that heroes walk among us every day, and they will become known to us when we least expect it. On behalf of the City of Saco, the Fire Department, and all of the first responders who came to aid that day, we wish to extend our heartfelt appreciation for the quick and courageous actions of Tyler Johnson, and wish to present you with a Citizen Heroism Award. Tyler, on behalf of the City of Saco and the Saco Fire Department, we wish to present you with this beautiful plaque. On this plaque, we have engraved, "Heroism Award Presented to Tyler Johnson in recognition of your extraordinary courage and selfishness on July 29th, 2025, when you entered a burning home at 22 Cleveland Street in Saco, Maine, and rescued two children, their grandfather, and their family dog from danger. Your brave actions save lives and exemplify the true spirit of heroism. With deepest gratitude, the City of Saco and the Saco Fire Department, August 11th, 2025." Okay, everyone, thank you so much for all of that very, very special night this evening. Okay, next on the item agenda is item number five, and that is Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak? Councillor Hewitt?
Just want to let everybody know, this Friday, August 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00, is preview night for the library's book sale. There are tickets on sale for that event, and the book sale is going to continue from August 16th to August 30th at Dyer Library.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any other members wishing to be recognized. Moving on to item six, that is Public Comment. If you would like to address council, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Roz Anton. I live at 6 Shannon Lane in Saco. I just wanted to make a comment. I'm a local Realtor and have been for about 20, well, 30 years, a little bit of a break, and I know there's been a lot of discussion around the original grievance petition regarding members of the planning board. And I was hoping that maybe I could lend a little bit of, from what I'm reading, what I'm seeing is there's a concern about real estate, people with a real estate license being able to participate. And I thought I would share with you maybe a few real-life examples to help shed the light in what it is to be a real estate agent. I notice here that the idea of limiting people with a real estate license is due to conflicts of interest or bias. Let me give you an example of when a real estate agent has a conflict of interest. I spent two years, I've never been to the, you've never seen me here. I spent two years in front of the planning board and council for Bitterford. I've been in Buxton and in York, but I've never once come here. A conflict of interest is when a real estate agent has their name on the purchase and sale agreement, or they potentially might be able to garner the listings of a subdivision. Just by homes being built, I don't have a particular advantage. If somebody builds 50 homes off Flag Pond Road, doesn't necessarily mean that real estate agent or myself is going to be able to sell them. As far as bias, I live in Saco. I haven't been able to make a left turn on Route 1 in about five years. I've had it with the traffic, and I would love to see the development stop, but I also know that it won't. And I think, you know, when you're looking at, when you're looking at a development and you're trying to make sure that things are fair and equitable, I think the challenge here is when you take people that are in real estate, you know, people sometimes have real estate licenses that they're not using, people have real estate licenses as administrators, and people that are in construction, you know, lend a great value because they can read things. And it takes a long time to understand a zoning ordinance. So I guess if we could just go back to what's in the ordinance, does it meet DEP approvals, you know, does it meet the comprehensive plan, you know, could we, could we stick to just what's already in place rather than removing a group of people in a particular profession from participating? I thank you for listening. Congratulations to Thornton Academy Lacrosse Team. Thank you, Roz.
Good evening, Mayor McPhail, City Administrator Bohanko, and members of the council. I'm Angie Presby. I reside at 10 Elijah James Drive. I serve on the advisory board for Saco Parks and Recreation, and I'm here in strong support of forming the Pepperell Park Ad-Hoc Committee. Pepperell Park is more than just a patch of land. It's a piece of our city's history, designed by the same visionary behind Central Park in New York City. For many years, it's been used as a schoolyard, but now we have a rare and meaningful opportunity to restore it to its original intent. A beautiful public green space just steps away from the heart of our downtown. Downtown green spaces are proven to strengthen communities. They give residents and visitors a place to gather, improve mental health, support local businesses' foot traffic, and make our city more walkable and welcoming. Opportunities like this don't come often. Medi cities just like us wait decades to reclaim land for green space use. By creating this committee, we can bring together community voices, experts, and city staff to design a park that honors its history while serving today's needs. I'm excited to make the most of this moment in return Pepperell Park to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion for the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by councillor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Hewitt. Any discussion or comments on the minutes? Councillor Hatch?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to request that we vote on each of these minutes separately, if we could, because there are points that I'd like to make on both of them.
Yep. Okay, so we will start with Approval of the Minutes, item A, that is July 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Councillor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Parks. Any discussion on July 14th, 2025? Councillor Hatch?
It's my understanding that we tabled those minutes, and I suspect that we need to untable them in order to vote. And I also want to confirm, based on my observation and reading through them, that we really have not changed those minutes, the narrative within it, from the first time we saw them. So we tabled the same minutes. I just want to, I just want to confirm that.
Okay, yep.
Because the issue was bringing some additional language into the minutes.
Correct, councillor Hewitt had.
Yeah, okay, so, so then I'm going to make a motion to untable, because I think we need to procedurally do that.
Second.
Okay, motion to untable has been made by councillor Hatch, second by councillor Johnston. Roll call vote. Councillor Parks?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to untable passes 6-0. Motion still stands on the floor for the full item A. Any additional questions or comments on that item? Okay, councillor Hewitt, are you satisfied with your changes that you had requested and looked for?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, not seeing any additional comments or questions. Roll call vote. Councillor Parks?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
No.
Okay, motion passes 5-1. Moving on to item B, that is the minutes for July 28th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve, councillor Hewitt? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Parks. Any discussion on those minutes? Councillor Hatch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, and I think councillor Johnston was alluding to this at the last meeting, that this, this body has agreed to compile minutes that does not create a verbatim narrative. And to deviate from that, I think requires, at least in my mind, an open council discussion and perhaps a modification of the rules and order of business. And I also think that the, the potential challenge we have here, if we're going to swing from a basic summary-type minutes supported by recorded video for detail, and we start swinging the pendulum the other way, if we're going to put singular comments into the minutes, then I think everybody's comments should be in the minutes. And that would be true, I would think, of every issue that we discuss throughout the meeting. And I believe, and councillor Johnston can correct me if I'm wrong, that at one point, there was a verbatim set of minutes, which created all kinds of staff time. And so I'm personally supportive of the way we currently take the minutes, but I'm not supportive of changing that process on the fly. And if we are going to insert, you know, a small handful of comments, I don't think it's fair to the rest of the council to not have all comments that were, that were mentioned that evening in the record. So, and we did distinguish between comments that a council would say, for the record, gets reported, and I think that would be, should be the only exception. So I'm going to try to make an amendment to the motion to approve these minutes, and if it's seconded, then we can vote and see what happens. And if we don't, or the vote does not prevail, I just want everybody to know, I will be voting negatively for the approval of the July 28th minute. So here's So here's my amendment. I am going to make a motion that we approve the July 28th, 2025 minutes as they were originally presented, without any mention of singular customer, I'm sorry, counselor comment.
Okay, an amendment has, oh. We'll get the amendment first, and then if there's discussion on the amendment. All right, the amendment has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Well, second for the purpose of discussion.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Okay, thank you. Any discussion or comments on the amendment? Councilor Hewitt?
I just want to clarify. The reason I didn't agree with the minutes being approved was when I read them over, it appeared that certain council statements in support of the change with grievance that would be biased against certain professions, including real estate agents, wasn't reflected in the minutes. I don't think every word has to be recorded, but if there's somebody who's dissenting against an opinion, I think it should be included. And it was my mistake not to say "for the record." I was, you know, that was my error. And my fellow counselors have pointed that out, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, so at the conclusion of our last meeting, I addressed the issue that I think Councilor Hatch has again resummarized. You know, we've had a longstanding policy where a counselor is to state whatever their comments are for the record. Otherwise, you get a summary by the city clerk or whoever is capturing generalized statements. So I voted against tabling it previously, because again, I felt this was an overreach by council. If we want to go back to the previous policy that, again, I was adamant we'd keep at that time, which was more of a verbatim minutes. I'm all for that, but we have a process for that. Now, I just voted no because, I got to correct you, Councilor Hatch, the, we voted on the July 14th minutes. Those minutes that were presented, as I read them, have been edited, which I also take exception to, because they're not presented as red lines. So again, I have absolutely no concern with what, you know, Councilor Hewitt has said. I appreciate what she said and think it should have been or should be included in minutes going forward if we are to amend the policy. However, we're again voting on the July 28th minutes, which does not capture, again, what we're speaking to. So we've already voted on July 14th, which is why it received a negative vote from me. But again, we've gone back and edited these. And to your point, you stated at the beginning, trying to understand what we were adopting. Those minutes are not what was presented two weeks ago. So I understand how you got confused. I had to reread them this afternoon to understand that they've been edited. But it does not show this in the record. So again, I take exception to that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Councilor Johnston on the date confusion. We voted on and just passed the July 14th minutes, which were edited, although the request to edit them was made clear, and they did just pass a council vote. So I think they're passed now. July 28th is, I think this is our first time seeing it. It has not been altered. My understanding of Robert's Rules Minutes is that they generally just capture the action items of the body. As a council, we have decided that certain things, such as council discussion and comment, and a few other items, like committee correspondence, seem to gain additional text in the minutes, and that's fine. I think that's useful. The transcript and the video are saved separately and remain available to the public for those who want to go back and review the text. So I would not be in favor of taking the staff time to change the minutes to be a transcript. We produce a second transcript and video. I also understand that a relatively new counselor wanted their, their comments captured in the minutes. Were unfamiliar with how to do so, and asked that we go back and reflect them, sort of a post hoc for the record. And in my mind, that's totally appropriate. The situation is resolved. The proper procedure for doing that is now made clear. So my suggestion is we continue with our current minute structure. Vote on this, move forward with a newly educated council who now knows how to get their comments in the record if they need to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To piggyback a little bit on Councilor Berman's point, when we get to the end of the year and we, as usual, you know, go over our rules and order of business, if we want to codify having just general summaries of, you know, the content of councilors speaking for, favor, or exponentially whatever, that may be worth looking at. Because again, to Councilor Berman's point, we are, we did agree to go to Robert's Rules strictly. I use that quotation marks though, because again, to his point though, if it was strictly, there wouldn't be any content in there whatsoever. But at the same time, you need to give the public a little something to follow just the very tenor of it if they did not witness the debate online or in person. So that's something I'd be willing to look at. But as far as the matter goes, yes, I mean, Councilor Hewitt made a good faith argument, and she did not, you know, because she didn't know about the, for the record. And again, that's, you know, there's, sometimes there's not, there's no, I often said, when I came on council, there was no one to train me and give me the deals, and seven people have seven different opinions. So I consider this a non-issue. And I mean, if it happens again, I mean, certainly it's, any other council would be like, yeah, we know you put it on the record. But aside from that, I'm happy with the situation as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just, I defer to Councilor Hewitt to make sure that what has been memorialized in the minutes, it says that you, you, there was no mention that you did have some opposition to the grievance. And I think we have to be careful if we're going to memorialize something that were somewhat accurate. My, my understanding was that you had opposition to one of the ad hoc committee recommendations within the grievance report. So the way it's written here, it implies that, that there's a totality. You're in opposition to the grievance, which is, and I know that's not what you intended. And that makes that statement somewhat contradictory to the, the December 16th vote we took, which was unanimous, 7-0, to acknowledge receipt of the grievance petition. So I think that if we're going to leave this in, if that's the wish of the council, that maybe we give you an opportunity to, I don't want to speak for you, so maybe some clarification as to specifically what your opposition was. And that's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
I would be willing to amend it to say that I don't agree on the, the ad hoc recommendation to limit the position or the, the profession of the members of the planning board. It's not that, I appreciate the work and the effort that went into the grievance, and I did state that, that day during the meeting.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so we can possibly bring this back as a quick little new business. If we would, if council would like to have City Clerk Hughes maybe present just a quick update or rundown of the minute procedure. City Administrator, is that something we could possibly?
That would be for the August 25th meeting.
Yep, we can either do that, or if current council feels, we can wait until Rules and Order of the Business.
Sure, whatever you desire.
Which will be done in December. And we can start from scratch with the new council at that time. So why don't we plan on that? Okay, great. All right, so back to the motion. We have the amendment on the floor, so voting on the amendment to approve the minutes as presented. Roll call vote, Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
No.
Councilor Hatch?
Sorry, no.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
Okay, motion is a tie, 3-3, with the mayor having the deciding vote, and I will vote no. So motion, amendment fails for 3. Going back to the main motion to approve the July 28th, 2025 meeting minutes as is. Roll call vote, Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
No.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
No.
Okay, motion passes 4-2. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. All right, moving on to item nine, that is the consent items. Item A is the confirmation of the appointment of the interim treasurer. And item B is the council's schedule for September, October, November, and December of 2025. Is there a motion for the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Parks. Any discussion on the items? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask to remove item A from consent and make it item A under action, if I may?
Certainly. Okay, there has been a motion for the consent items, an amendment to move, remove item A, moving it down to action. Any discussion on that or on item B? Okay, roll call vote to confirm item B and move item A. Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, moving on to action item number nine. Item A of the consent is now item A of the action, and that is confirmation of the appointment of the interim treasurer, and that is Councilor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with Section 5.03 of the City Charter, 4-11 of the City Code, and Title 30-A, Section 2603, the City of Saco recommends appointing Ryan Panero as interim treasurer effective immediately. Ryan has been with the City of Saco since October 2013 and is currently the Director of Information Technology. Ryan's appointment as interim treasurer reflects the City of Saco's commitment to fiscal responsibility and operational excellence during our search for a new finance director. Be it ordered that the City Council confirms the appointment of Ryan Panero as interim treasurer commencing immediately, and sunsetting with the council confirmation of a new finance director treasurer, I move to approve the order.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion or comment on the item? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in full support of this appointment. I just thought that we, I've had some discussions with some folks and felt that we needed to at least explain a little further what's going on here publicly in this forum. I think the, I clearly understand the whole process. And, and you know, in my academic days as an undergraduate accounting, when, when we took auditing classes and when I served as an internal auditor at a bank, segregation of duties is a very, very, very important feature that gets measured in any, any audit, municipal or otherwise. And so to be able to separate individuals participating in transactions in which funds are being dispersed or collected is, is really important. And I fully understand one of the other challenges we have, and we've had them in small, some of the small banks that I worked in, where you needed segregation of duties, but you just didn't have enough bodies. Okay, so you try to do the best you can with the staff that you have. I think the point, and I think I understand it, but I think the point that needs some clarification, we've, we've hired Judy as a, as a part-time interim, and she, she has indicated that she's not interested in taking on the role of the treasurer, which I understand. I just thought, John, it would be helpful if that could be explained a little further, and then we can vote on.
Sure. One of the important things is that, at this point, we're changing signatories, not only for this position, but for the interim city administrator. So there's a, there's a process that we're going through already. So at this point, it would be good to have somebody that is available on site all the time. Judy consented to come back and do some interim work for us. She has planned a couple of things, so she might not be there. She's not going to be there full-time. So it's important for us to have somebody that's here. In accordance with the state statute, we bond the person, so we're in the process of doing that. It really, and of course, Ryan, you know, we, our, our system regarding accounting is a runoff of munis. And Ryan has a tremendous experience, obviously, in munis. And I want to just let you know that Judy will be looking at all the transactions. I'm now approving all transactions myself, so I look at all of them. So at this point, we thought it was probably the best thing for continuity to have somebody in that's been here for 12 years or so and, and have that knowledge. Judy will be working very closely with him because munis wasn't her system that she worked with when she was in another community, but she obviously understands municipal finance. So by bringing them together, I think it helps create a better working relationship. And so if Judy needs some help on describing what you have to do in munis on a particular issue, Ryan will be there. And certainly, Ryan can ask Judy many questions. Always, and Ryan is a very serious young guy, and he takes it very seriously.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions?
It doesn't. Thank you for that input.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any roll call votes. Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item A has now become item B, and that is one reading to authorize the creation of the Pepperell Park Ad-Hoc Redesign Committee, and that is Councilor Hewitt.
Pepperell Park, which was a prominent park in the City of Saco from late 1800s to the late 1960s, at which time Fairfield School was built. In November 2024, the citizens of Saco voted to consolidate the Saco schools, which will allow Pepperell Park to potentially be a prominent park once again. On November 16th, 2025, Todd Richardson from Richardson &amp; Associates, a local landscape architect located on the Middle Street in Saco, presented a presentation for the Pepperell Park redesign. Todd has worked with Parks and Recreation to create a starting point of what Pepperell Park could be as the City of Saco's destination park. The initial design has been presented to the Saco Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the City Administrator John Bohenko, and the city staff, and to the Saco City Council to determine the next steps. The Parks and Recreation Director is requesting to create a committee that will help with the redesign of Pepperell Park, that will present to the council their final design for approval. The Parks and Recreation Director is requesting a sunset clause of the committee. Once the committee has approved the final design, the committee will no longer need to exist. The Parks and Recreation Director has requested that the committee be made up of nine volunteers, which will consist of the City of Saco mayor, one member from council, one member from Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one member from Saco Conservation Committee, and five at-large members from Saco, which will be appointed by the mayor. Once the committee has been approved by the council, citizens from Saco can go to sacomaine.org/AdvisoryBodies to sign up to possibly be appointed by the Saco City Council. Be it ordered that the City Council approves the creation of a Pepperell Park Ad-Hoc Redesign Committee.
Motion has been made by Councilor Hewitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion or comments on the item? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really in favor of the Pepperell Park. I was excited by the design, and certainly I'm going to support this committee. I do just want to make clear that the council has not yet approved a plan, has not yet approved a budget, nor has it formally allocated that land for this purpose. And so while I support moving forward with what may become the eventual purpose of Pepperell Park, I just think the public and the committee and, and city staff should just understand that I think, right, the council has not yet acted in those ways to determine that this is a preset reality. It's a great vision. I support it. But council will still need to act for the budget and to dedicate the land to that purpose again.
Thank you, and that is correct. That is part of the duties of the committee, to kind of come up with the final plan, budget, so that way we know if it is feasible or possible going forward, as well as helping in determination of the land. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Okay, moving on to item C, which was formerly item B. That is the final reading for the fiscal year 2026 budget for the ambulance special revenue fund upgrade to the radio communication system. That is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. The fire department is requesting to upgrade its radio communication system from very high frequency, 300 megahertz VHF, to 800 megahertz to ensure seamless interoperability with neighboring fire department and emergency services that have already adopted the 800 megahertz system. Justification, specification, and costs are outlined in the attached memo dated June 24th, 2025 from Chief Hamel. I would like to put forward an amendment for an appropriation of $89,132.69 in the ambulance special revenue fund account number 200105-500400-00000 to purchase the requested equipment. This purchase complies with the intent of the Saco City Charter, Section 60-5 ambulance fund. This purchase would be funded from the ambulance special revenue fund committed fund balance. Be it ordered that the city council establish an appropriation of $89,132.69 from the ambulance special revenue fund committed fund balance for the purchase of equipment to upgrade its radio communication system.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston? Okay, any discussion or comment on the item? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Okay, that completes the action items. Moving on to item 10, new business. First item up, item A, is the acceptance of the temporary construction easement for the Saco School Project.
I would ask that the deputy city administrator come and speak to this issue?
Good evening, everyone. We had been asked to put this on the agenda by Drummond Woodsum. They're working with both the city and the schools on acquiring temporary easements for the Saco School Project. I've asked Jonah DeWaters, the Oak Point project manager, to join us this evening as well, so he's also here to answer more specific questions if you have them. The schools and the city have been working together on acquiring some of these easements, and really Drummond wanted to make, Drummond Woodsum wanted to make sure that the city council had seen them and gone through a one-reading process to basically accept the format of the future easements. You'll see they're not all written out for every property owner, but you're really looking at the format of the easement because they will be in the city's name. And certainly, we can ask Jonah to give any more specific details if you have specific questions on the easement locations.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Prescott? Counselor Hewitt, then Counselor Berman?
Have the property owners been notified?
Yes, they have been notified, and there have been discussions with the school representatives as well as some city representatives.
Were there any property owners that didn't agree to it or that were upset?
I believe there were questions from some property owners. I don't know that anyone completely disagreed or completely agreed at this point, but we can certainly ask Jonah for more of a status update on that.
Okay, Counselor Berman?
Really a process question. With this vote, are we then accepting the easements when agreed upon by the property owners, or do those easements come back for a future vote?
We're asking you from our legal team to accept the easement format, so when, and the general locations, so after they're signed off on, they'll be in the city's name automatically.
Okay, thank you.
And we're happy to give you updates of the final versions if it's helpful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to dovetail off Counselor Hewitt's question, what would happen if we find a property owner that was not willing to give us an easement? Are we relegated to eminent domain, or, I mean, I don't know how that process works, but I'm curious.
Yeah, I think that's a good question for legal, and we can kind of cross that bridge if we come to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So once this has been completed, it will be brought back for one reading to council?
We were anticipating bringing back the format of the easement to you on August 25th for a one-reading process, and that way the legal team has everything they need going forward.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Johnston, as part of the school construction committee, would you like to be the council resource?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item B, and that is the budget amendment request for the inventory analysis and the initial outreach to help fund a local comprehensive beach management plan?
Yes, I'd like the Director of Public Works, Travis Moore, to come forward to talk about this. I know there were some questions at the last meeting, and there was a thought of how to break it down, and there was concern that we weren't going to retread new old ground. And I'll let Travis talk about how this is being presented.
Yep, so, good evening. So what we've brought forward here is the Phase One that we talked about last, last time we were here. So what we're planning to do is ask for the budget amendment for the $46,000 to be able to engage with tie-in bond to enter into Phase One to start the inventory analysis phase. We're going to be working to apply for a community action grant through the state in order to fund the phases two and three. So this is just initial step to get the, get the process started, to gather all of our information that we've done over the years, get it all compiled into one place, engage York County on what they're doing with the category B and G, so that we can all get on the same page for this phase, and then, you know, hopefully we're successful with the grant to be able to fund phases two and three.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Director Moore? Counselor Berman?
No, I really appreciate it, and I appreciate it the way you've broken it down. And one of the things I was reflecting on when reading this packet is just what you highlighted, is that actually, things are really spread out right now. We filed a beach management plan some years ago with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. We have a number of other procedures and policies at different places. We're now working with their county. We're now going to have an Army Corps of Engineers manual about a jetty and beach nourishment. And I think it's going to just really serve the citizens of the city really well to have a comprehensive plan based on the City of Saco that ties these things together, puts it in one place, and, you know, presents a comprehensive plan for how we're going to move forward with these different aspects. So some of my concerns about retreading old ground, as I saw this scope of work, has kind of been ameliorated because it is really important to get all of these various documents, aspects, policies, and procedures into one place and present that comprehensively to move forward. So I just appreciate the work you've done, and I really approve of the scope of work.
Yeah. And one other thing that I didn't touch on is there'll be some, some public outreach in this initial phase, too, to get some, you know, property owners as well as other stakeholders to come to the table and, you know, let us know what their concerns and work together.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, likewise, I was thinking the same things as Counselor Berman. I know through the years, you know, there has been similar attempts at creating some kind of comprehensive manual or policy to go forward, and there's a lot of information out there, so being able to kind of compile it, I think, would be helpful to, you know, not just residents down there, but all of the community. But as a, as a side note, something that I would find helpful, I think citizens would too, I know over the last, say, two, three years, we've started either allocating or expending more finances towards, you know, coastal erosion, Camp Ellis area. If we could kind of compile all that, so we can track that from the council level, because it, you know, again, just off the top of my head, I'm well aware of, you know, several million that we've, might not have expended, but certainly allocated, I think that would be helpful as we move forward with the ACOAE project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. Travis, just one clarification on the scope of services in the contract. It indicates that when it lists off the meetings, the number of meetings, the last one is one presentation of the city council. I'm assuming that that is, is in addition to the presentation we had as a new business item, so it will be another final, here's what, here's what we came up with kind of presentation. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any last thoughts or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we, moving on to item 11, that is the administrative update. City Administrator Bahenko?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Couple things, I just wanted to report on an RFP Ferry Road box culvert. The Saco Department of Public Works is soliciting bids for the fabrication and delivery of eight-foot-high by 15-foot-wide by 50-feet-long pre-cast concrete clamshell box culvert that will be installed under a separate contract on Ferry Road. Bid documents can be found on the city website under the bids and RFP webpage. Bid proposals are scheduled to be received at Saco DPW at 1:00 p.m. on August 20th, 2025. Next item is on the City of Saco tax commitment. The City of Saco Assessing Department has scheduled the tax commitment for the week of August 11th. The annual tax commitment is the official process of setting the property tax rate and finalize the assessed values used to generate tax bills. This step ensures that the city can collect the necessary revenue to fund schools, public safety, infrastructure, and other essential municipal services for the coming fiscal year. As part of the ongoing effort to ensure assessment remain fair and equitable, the city recently completed a commercial industrial revaluation for the first time in 20 years. This initiative updated assessed values for commercial and industrial properties to reflect current market conditions. The ongoing residential measuring list, which is not a revaluation, is not in effect for the current tax billing process. This project aims to ensure the accuracy of the city's property cards, support fair and equitable assessments for all residential property owners, and will not be implemented until 26, 27 tax bills. Property tax bills are being processed and are expected to be mailed in early September. I have an update on our wayfinding signage. It's been a project that's been ongoing. The first of Saco's new wayfinding signs will be installed this week. Installation will continue this summer as we update signage for the city's gateway and other key locations, from downtown to the industrial business park and all the way to the waterfront. And I just, personal note, I really enjoyed the, the festival yesterday, a beautiful day, and the staff did a wonderful job, along with all the volunteers. So kudos to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments to the city administrator? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Back to the residential measuring list, just to clarify, that's ongoing. So if I were to pull up a property card on the Vision software, that's not going to be updated yet? It will?
Probably, but I'm going to check it.
Okay. But regardless, it won't come into effect until 26?
The key is that when the revale took place, statistical revale took place, which we're all aware of.
Yeah.
That's when it was implemented from the statistical point of view. The measuring list, which will be completed, will not be until, I said, the 26, 27 year. And in that particular time, you might find, what you'll find is there might be some adjustments only because certain properties didn't take out permits and things happened, so they get, they basically update everything, so all the information is there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm interested in. There's several properties I'm aware of that I'm kind of waiting to see how that tax card changes or hope that it changes. Thank you.
If it doesn't, let me know.
I will.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On a slightly lighter note, though, but it just came to me, since we are taking this opportunity to replace all those wayfinder signs, do we have any, are we just going to throw away the old ones? Because, and the reason I ask, because, you know, some of those signs were up there for a long time, they're a familiar part of Saco's heritage. I know we might want to retain those, you know, maybe in a shed somewhere in case the museum wants them, or, oh, I don't know, you know, there's a lot of college kids that love to have signs like that on their, their own walls. I know a couple of friends of mine, many years ago, that, let's just say they liberated a Dunkin' Donuts rug from the lobby of a Dunkin' Donuts, fortunately in a neighboring community. So I'm wanting to keep the kids on a straight now. I think having a collection of signs that would tongue-in-cheek decor core for 18 to 21-year-olds might be a good pro-municipal outreach to the youth of this community.
Well, to answer your first question, they will be taken down. And, and so, you know, we may hold on for a little bit, but if we have no interest in them, I mean, obviously you have to go through a process, you can't just give them away, you know? So, interesting, I mean, we'll, I'll talk to Travis tomorrow about it, see what, what he thinks.
It could be, there could be some businesses that might be interested if it's their business name, or, yeah, if there was a way.
Yeah, there would have to be, there would have to be an equitable process.
Yep, yep. All right, anyone else? Okay, moving to item 12, that is council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to share?
Okay, I personally would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of the staff, all of the volunteers, my husband Alex, who was the emcee. Harbor Fest yesterday was an amazing event. This is our third year back, and it was bigger than ever. David and Kevin with SOS helping to lead all the charge. Our grand marshal was the late Dean Canaris. Many remember him as the fishing optician. We all had T-shirts, they were sold out, and his wife Ellen, we presented the congratulations to her and the honor, and she was thrilled to be there, many friends and family as well. It was food, laughter, fun, smiles, family, and again, it was an amazing day. And so again, personal thanks to all of the departments, the fire, the police, and everybody that was involved in the organization. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to item 13, executive session. Is there a motion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. It's become a tradition, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRS A Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405, 6A, Personnel Matters.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman? Roll call vote. Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to enter executive session at 7:30, passes six-zero, and we will be downstairs in the conference room. Motion to enter executive session at 7:30 passes 6-0, and we will be downstairs in the conference room. All right, thank you and welcome back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote, Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session at 7:57 passes 6-0. Counselor Gunn, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. There is a motion to authorize you as the mayor and the interim city administrator, when she comes on, to enter into a contract with the outgoing city administrator, John Bohinko, for consulting purposes for the month of September.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on that item? Final comments? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, thank you everyone. And item 15 is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote, Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 6-0 at 7:58. Thank you everyone and have a great evening.